Okay, everyone, are you ready to get started? We're going to learn about some ethics in local government tonight. And my name is Hilly. I work for Action Tank. Ioanna Perisgabopoulos is here. Do you want to introduce yourself, Ioanna?
My name is Ioanna Perisgabopoulos. I'm the co-founder and executive director of Action Tank. We are super excited that we're extending night school beyond the duration of our original grant for it. So I think this is our first post-grant city council night school. Hilly is really taking the lead on moderating these sessions. So I'm here to help. And if I'll kind of manage the chat and I'll manage the tech. And if anything comes up, I'm here. But it's really nice to see you guys.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'm going to introduce our first speaker, Susan Wilkie. Susan is an accomplished government relations professional with more than 29 years of experience in public affairs, communication, and public speaking. Susan joined the Ohio Ethics Commission in 2005 as the education and communications manager, where she oversees and conducts educational and communication outreach. In that position, Susan presents approximately 200 speeches annually, develops information strategies regarding agency programs, and represents the Ethics Commission to Ohio citizens, the media, and the Ohio Legislature. Prior to joining the commission, Susan served in the Communications Office at the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency as a legislative aide in the Ohio House of Representatives. So with that, I'm going to introduce Susan.
Thank you so much. Let me see if I can successfully share my screen here. And I want to make just the first slide come up. Let me see if I can do that without. Here we go. There we go. So thank you so much, first of all, for inviting me tonight. I am Susan Wilkie with the Ohio Ethics Commission. I'll tell you a little bit about the commission, the law itself tonight. But just so you know, I've often said, I think I have the best job at the Ohio Ethics Commission. I'll tell you a little bit more about all the folks that I work with. But my job really is to get people sort of in that. It ranges anywhere from that kind of ethics law 101 to the more high level. Here's people in public service where they've been hired, elected, appointed, et cetera, to kind of help us all understand what the ethics law is, what it's really all about. So I've been with the Ethics Commission for, it'll be 16 years this year. And I've been with the state of Ohio. It'll be, can you believe it? This October will be 30 years I've been with the state of Ohio, which is remarkable since I'm only 39 years old. Am I right? Yeah. And you're thinking, is the ethics committee allowed to lie to us in the first five seconds ever? So yes, about your age, you're allowed to like, you know, fudge a little bit, right? No, but I've been with the state of Ohio for a long time. And I will tell you, I am one of the folks that is really proud of my public service. I have loved my career. I love the Ethics Commission. I feel very passionately about the law. Warms me that I'm with people tonight who are voluntarily hanging out with me to talk about the ethics law. I have a lot of hostages in my training world. You have to understand, people that were told they have to take the training. So when I was invited to give a speech that people just want to know more, they want, they want to be involved in their community. That speaks to me so highly about the people that I'm with tonight. So I just want you to know, it's my great honor to hang out with you a little bit tonight. So I thought we could start before we jump into the what's in the ethics law. Just for a second or two, I think it's so important to kind of have the foundation of why. You know what? To be honest, the why isn't the reason that I think people often assume it is. You know what I mean? I will be honest with you. I know the word bribery is tossed around a lot right now. That totally makes sense, not just because of what happened in Cincinnati or allegedly happened, but you may have heard about similar situations in the city of Toledo Council and Guyaga County, Cleveland City Council. Gosh, the former speaker of the House of Representatives. So I get that, that this is a big word in everybody's mind. But I will tell you, when I started teaching the ethics law and actually doing the formal instruction on it, it never occurred to me that would be something I have to say. Do you know what I mean? Sort of in that category of things that you kind of think that sort of goes without saying. I don't know if any of you are moms and dads out there, but have any of you ever had to say something that you never, ever thought you'd actually have to say out loud? I remember one night telling my husband, I actually said a sentence tonight that I never thought any human being ever had to say. And he said, what did you say? And I said, I actually heard myself say to a three-year-old, please stop licking the dishwasher. Right? Sometimes you end up saying these things you didn't think were necessary. I won't lie to you. When it comes to my line of work, telling someone, oh, and by the way, while you're a public employer, a public official, don't take a bribe. I kind of thought that was one of those things that kind of went without saying. I never thought I'd have to say out loud. So I don't want, though, the impression just because of the stories and the headlines you've heard, that's the only foundation for the ethics law. When it comes right down to it, the ethics law has always been about people, both in public service, yes, I want everybody in public service to obey the ethics law so they don't get into trouble. But on a bigger scale, that all of us, no matter what you do for a living, whether you're in nonprofit, you're in the private sector, you're in the public sector, no matter what your life's journey has been like, I will go to my grave arguing that taxpayers in Ohio have the right to expect that governments operate fairly, impartially, right? That they operate in a way that always serve the public, right? I know the word bias has quite a loaded connotation and with good reason. But I also say, I understand why laws like ours are necessary because the truth is, people do have some biases that aren't in and of themselves dangerous. For example, for as much as you hate it when the children lick the dishwasher, is there anybody on this webinar that would be willing to say you have the most beautiful children or grandchildren ever born on planet earth? If you raise your hand, I'm going to say, you know what? You're absolutely right. Yes, of course. I thank you, Hilly, for the shout out there for your babies. Yes, right? You know, here's the thing. Because humans don't cease to be human when they go into public service, whether they've been hired, elected, or appointed. Every public servant in Ohio is subject to the Ohio Ethics Law. But none of us cease to be human. Of course, there are times in my life when my thinking could be a little biased. It doesn't necessarily make me evil or unfit to hold a public office or a public job. But for example, my father, we lost him in 2019. My dad was 94 years old, a highly decorated World War II veteran, two Purple Hearts, a Bronze Star for valor, really awesome guy. Pretend that I didn't work for the Ethics. Let's pretend instead that I had been working all these years at the Ohio Veteran Services Commission, and my dad applied for a grant for, you know, like upkeep to his home to help him in the shower for safety. Do you think less of me? If I admit to you in that moment, if I saw my dad's application, then it might be tough for me to be completely 100% objective. That's the idea of the law. It's not just to weed out people that we think of as evil. It's a reminder to all of us in public service that because when I come to work every day, I do not leave, I definitely don't leave behind my life right now since I'm actually working in a spare bedroom right now, right? Even in normal circumstances, we don't leave behind the fact that we have families, we have loved ones, we have business interests, we have our own financial investments. Some people in public service have their own job. The idea of the law is to give some sort of framework to say, within the confines of your public role, there are still going to be times when you're going to step away, you're going to remove yourself because the public deserves to know. Every time a public decision is made, a permit is reviewed, a license is issued, an investigation occurs, an inspection happens, someone retains a consultant, hires new employees, whatever, you have the right to know those decisions were objective and based on what served the public well. So that none of you ever have to wonder, did our township trustees vote that way because it helped the township? Or is it because it helped all their personal businesses? That's the real intent behind the ethics law. So the commission itself, we are a relatively small state agency. There's only 18 of us that work there. But here are our four statutory requirements that we spend a lot of time on. The first two I often think of as very proactive. We have, just so you know, we have two advisory attorneys at the Ohio Ethics Commission. Their entire job is to give free legal guidance to people in public service that don't want to screw up, right? When that moment comes in a public employer, a public official's life, when they say, well, you know what? I actually do want to do the right thing. I'm just, I'm not sure what the right thing is. How do I interpret the law? How do I know? We have two attorneys who are, they respond every year to about 3,000 emails, another 1,500 phone calls, and hundreds of letters that come to the mail of people just like me that want to do the right thing, but might need help interpreting the statute, right? I always feel like their efforts combined with my section, the education, training, communication, our job is sort of that proactive outreach of let us help people in Ohio know what the ethics law says, what it is, so that when that day comes of decision, that they know when they need to recuse, when they need to abstain, what action they should or shouldn't take. So my job is to kind of take the legal language and make it very palatable for people who may not be attorneys, right? Who are just normal, hardworking, everyday people who may be in public service that may not know what the statute says. Then this third bullet point, this is, this is the part of our commission where they actually deal with post-action, right? The advice and education, our focus is helping people make the right choice before they potentially act on something that was a bad idea or frankly, illegal. This is a criminal statute. The investigative unit are the ones that get involved when an allegation or we are looking into the possibility that someone may have in fact violated the ethics law. I once had a school board member, I will not tell you what school board it was, if that's okay. I had a school board member once call me on the phone. She's like, hey, Susan, I think you, your last speech, she said, we can always call for advice. I said, yeah, tell me what's going on and I'll see if I can connect with one of our advisory attorneys. She starts telling me the issue that she's facing. And I noticed, she'll be very proud of me, all of you who are like English majors. But I began to notice she was speaking in the preterite. Are you with me? Then I did this, then I voted on that, then we decided, everything was passed. And so I finally said to her, so wait a minute, you've already done all of these things that you're reporting to me? And she said, well, yes, that's why I needed to call you. I need some advice. And of course, in my mind, I'm thinking, no, no, you don't need advice. You need an attorney now, right? Because once the actions already occurred, there's not advice to be given. We end up transferring right to our investigative account. And a shout out to our investigators. They are highly trained, very professional, wicked smart. They can even be compassionate when the situation warrants it. But they do have a job to do to make sure again, that when someone does step outside the boundaries of the law, that there should be some accountability. This financial disclosure, when this is a minority of people in public service in Ohio that have to annually file these forms with us, give or take, hopefully, there's around 600,000 people in public service in Ohio. Now, in fairness, that does not mean there's 600,000 public employees like me. This is actually my full-time job. Yes, I get a paycheck. Don't forget, there's lots of people who are in public service that may not even be paid. Like, for example, a library board of trustee member, very well, may not even get any money out of that. But they're still subject to the law based on the fact that they have fiduciary relationship with the public body. So of that 600,000 people, again, hired, elected, appointed, there's all told between 10,000 and 11,000 that annually file these financial disclosure statements with us. It's essentially a added level of transparency, usually for people with higher levels of public trust. Many elected officials, people who are high up in state government. It's a way that the public can see. So wait a minute, I noticed that the county that I lived in, that the county commissioners always seem to vote this direction on this contract with this company. I'm going to look for their forms to make sure none of those folks own those companies. It's just a way to kind of keep an eye out for those potential conflicts of interest. So if that's kind of the why and the who, here is, in fairness, here's the what, the Ohio Ethics Law. Certainly, in a brief session like this, we are not going to do a deep legal dive into any one of these areas of the ethics law. I'd kind of like to give you on some of the main ones, kind of the overarching goal and some of the major prohibitions and restrictions that we see. And again, why it benefits the public. If, as you go through, if there's anything that you want to ask me, you certainly can use the chat function and my two wonderful coordinators have volunteered to kind of like say, hey, Susan, stop talking for one minute, right? Just slow down so that we can get this question. Or if you prefer to have a dialogue at the end, I'll certainly leave time for that as well. But here's the areas we're going to cover. And the truth is, I always like to start with conflict of interest. And I will tell you, I do think this phrase can sometimes get a bad rap. And here's why. I know it has an ominous tone to it, doesn't it? Oh, no, I have a conflict of interest, dun, 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 right? The truth is, conflicts of interest are not terribly uncommon in public service. The truth is, they happen with some frequency. And having a conflict of interest has never been illegal. What's illegal is when someone in public service actually moves forward to act on that conflict of interest. Like, for example, let's pretend that I worked for the Hamilton County Department of Health. And part of my job was to inspect restaurants in our county to make sure they're meeting all the safety codes and standards. And now let's pretend that while I'm working at the Hamilton County Department of Health, I have a sister who owns a restaurant in Hamilton County. Is that a conflict of interest for me? Absolutely. Is it any reason, though, for me to panic? No, as long as I say, I'm not the one that can do that inspection. Not only am I going to inspect it, I'm not going to discuss it. I'm not going to have behind-the-scenes conversations. I'm not going to coach my sister. I'm not going to talk to the inspector. I stay 100% completely out of it. I have not acted on the conflict of interest. It only becomes illegal when I act on a potential conflict of interest. So I put just a few examples together. We could come up with dozens, I realize. But here's just a few, right? I actually did this one already. So this is the kind of thing where if they actually inspected, now they've acted on the conflict. If they stepped away, it wouldn't have been illegal. This one, everybody was based on a real situation, not in Hamilton County. Don't worry, this wasn't Southwest Ohio. I'm going to use my, you know, my public email and my public laptop to use public email addresses to advertise some invention that my son came up with and say, here, spread the word and feel free to buy it. I hope people begin to see why that my private life and my public duties shouldn't be overlapping like that. There should always be that separation. I was never allowed to use my public role or my public authority to advance my own interests, those of my family members, or those of business associates that I have in my private outside life. Now, I will tell you, this situation is not terribly uncommon in that people in public service often do move on to the private sector, whether it's because somebody like me, I retire or I quit, I go work in the private sector, or somebody was a public elected official. They were already in the private sector and they, you know, they're still in it and they're going right back again when they're not in public office anymore. But someone is wondering, am I ever allowed to move on? The answer is sure. Public service is not the Hotel California, right? No one's saying, once you've checked in, you can never leave, kind of thing, right? But what, incidentally, if there's anybody here who has no idea what I'm talking about, your homework assignment for this weekend is to listen to the Eagles' greatest hits, Your Life Will Be Better, am I right, everybody out there? Okay, yes, thank you, right? What we're saying, though, is that I wouldn't, again, thinking that cross of a private life, public life, can't, they can't connect like this. As if in my public life, I work for, so I work like for the solid waste management district in Southwest Ohio, right? And, oh, by the way, I've kind of been interested in this job posting I saw on Waste Management's website. I hope people in public service can see why it would be problematic if while I am in my government job, currently the contact, the overseer, the project manager, the whatever, for that, that private sector, I cannot be negotiating a potential new salary at the same time I'm overseeing their interaction, their contract, their regulation, et cetera, with my public entity. That's the idea. But this one, I'll tack on real quickly. This is something that I do remind public employees and public officials of all the time. I kind of tack this on to the conflict of interest. If I have any attorneys with me, yes, this is a different part of the statute, but I think it fits well here. This is the part of the law that would remind people in public service, you can never represent your client in your private life in front of your public agency. So for example, if I work in the, you know, tax department, you know, in Hamilton County, I cannot have a tax preparation business on the side whereby I am representing clients completing their tax form that then go before my own public office. Again, that idea of keeping those parts of our lives separate. It doesn't mean, again, people in public service won't have those outside lives. It just means they're not going to be acting on them, moving forward on them. So normally, in a longer class, I would do this whole, that we would actually vote and we would debate. We're not going to do all that in a short time. But I wanted to show you some of the questions that have come up that I sometimes respond to, questions like this. You don't actually have to vote. Don't worry, there's no polling here. If I can see some, you can just nod or shake your head or thumbs up or thumbs down of what you think the Ethics Commission say in these scenarios. These are all conflict of interest issues. So can the sibling of a city employee seek help from that agency knowing his sister works there? Is this sibling? Yes, people are already named, yes, absolutely. That's not the illegal part. What becomes illegal is if that sibling sought help from the agency and his sister acted, recommended, advocated, lobbied, signed off on, so forth and so forth. I never lack an additional synonym. So you get the idea there, okay? Here's another one. Oh, you guys, this one's based on a real story too. I won't tell you where, but this is absolutely true. So I become a city, this was actually a village in real life, but I had to make it city since we're talking about the city. So I'm a city council member and I'm going to vote on this water forgiveness bill knowing that I'm off the hook for, you're probably picking up on my non-verbals and my tone already. What do you think the Ethics Commission said to this person? They said, welcome, welcome to the world of investigations, is what we said. No, that was never, now, I get, let me just point out here real quickly. I want to acknowledge that there are times that people in public service, whether they've been hired, elected, or appointed, will act on matters that do impact people in their lives or themselves. So like, for example, we would never say, the Cincinnati City Council, so wait a minute, you guys have a budget you have to pass and there's money in the budget to pave roads, right? Yeah. And you live in Cincinnati, right? Yeah. And you drive on the roads in Cincinnati that could be paved, right? Yeah. Oh, you can't vote on this budget. We do not interpret the statute that broad. We do not want good government to stop happening. If it's a broad, across-the-board, uniform impact, it impacts everyone equally, of course, they act on those matters, right? That water forgiveness thing, I hope you see the difference. That was pretty specific. They were going to get a definite direct impact of being forgiven $5,000 in debt. All right, we talked about this one briefly already. I will tell you, in my, my former life, I mentioned I've been with the Ethics Commission 15 years. In my former life, I actually used to work for Ohio EPA. I was in their communications office. This wasn't uncommon, right? That some environmental engineer working for Ohio EPA does in fact see a job posting on XYZ engineering consulting firm, and they're interested in that job. It isn't always illegal because here's the thing. And an agency that size, the city of Cincinnati, I don't know how many people work for the city. It's got to be thousands, right? So it isn't uncommon that I might be able to say, well, I see this job posting on this website, but I have nothing to do with that company, whatever interaction they have with the city. In that case, if it truly is possible for me to be 100% recused, then yes, maybe it's possible. If I cannot be recused, if I'm part of that, then no. So that's why I kind of did a fudging thing to maybe. This is a great advertisement, though, for someone in that scenario to call the Ethics Commission and say, hey, I hear you give free advice on what people need to do. We would say, talk to the legal counsel for the city. Call us. We would so much rather spend time with people advising and educating them rather than investigating them. Even though we do investigate people, that wouldn't be our preference. Our preference would be that people know what the right thing is to do upfront. Now, I realize that conflict situation, that is like taking a drink of water from a fire hose. As you can well imagine, we could spend two hours just on conflicts of interest, of course. It's such a rich part of the law that I always feel like I'm learning something new. But if there's anything burning on someone's mind right now, is there anything out there about conflicts? And we'll try to hit some other areas of the laws. Or anything that anybody wants to ask me while we're, while I take a drink of water, I guess. Anybody out there?
Anybody has a question, they can unmute themselves.
Yeah, we're not.
I'll go for one.
Okay.
Okay, you're a politician. Hypothetically, you receive a bunch of money through a PAC. It's going to fund something in your political life at some point. You then are engaged actively in governing on matters that affect the people that gave you that money on specific real estate projects. By law, should you refuse yourself from any and all votes involving those projects?
So great question. And here's the, this is a great example of a situation where we, if someone called us with a question like that, we would recommend that they reach out to more than one agency. They're fine to call us, but we would also say, always make sure you are obeying the Ohio elections laws as well, right? Of campaign finance and, you know, all those things, all that normal stuff. We would say, make sure you talk to them, they're the experts on that. It's a very astute question, insightful. Here is what the ethics law says. The law does say, absent a bribe, absent some other untoward illegal campaign contribution, assuming all campaign contributions were done in accordance with all appropriate elections laws, that in and of itself does not create the conflict. Where we would absolutely advise people is any time someone who is, use your example, an elected official, that we would always say to them, you must recuse if, if it's a definite direct impact on you. Like, for example, if something that's before my public body would have a direct impact on the property values on the street that I live on. It's very defined and limited. Or if it's an impact on a relative of mine, I should never vote on something. We'll talk about this public contracts too. But I will never vote in a contract in which my, let's say, adult child is going to get a contract with the city. Or we also say, anywhere that I have a direct financial fiduciary relationship, my business and my private life, my company that I own or work for, clients in my private life, those are the areas that are identified as that I would have an actual conflict. So legal campaign contributions do not automatically create a conflicted situation under our statute.
So is, in this hypothetical, the elected official receives money from, let's say, a developer for, and it goes into a campaign fund, and then they assist the developer in some way with a project the developer wants to get approvals for? Does that constitute the type of bribe?
Again, again, a legal, a legal campaign contribution does not constitute a conflict of interest for that official in which would they then be required to accuse themselves. If it's a legal campaign contribution, it does not automatically create a conflict.
So the question becomes, is it legal or not? And then the question is, did they give the money in exchange for a specific action?
Right, this statute, there, again, very insightful. You picked up on that, that the statute specifically says, absent a bribe or other criminal activity. Correct. A legal campaign contribution, right?
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thanks for asking. We're good so far, everybody? All right, awesome. So the next thing to the ethics, and we won't spend a ton of time on this, but I'll tell you, when I'm speaking to public employees and public officials, we do tend to spend a good amount of time on this because it is a question that comes up a lot. It's really interesting, actually, because I've been doing this for so many years, that people, if I'm in a live, I know this is live, but if I'm in an in-person session, like at a conference somewhere, somebody will say to me, oh, you don't have to spend a ton of time on this part of the law for us, Susan, you know, public employees, we're not, we're not used to getting a lot of stuff. And, and I always say, listen, you're talking to the expert, right? I work for the Ohio Ethics Commission. People send remarkably few presents to the Ohio Ethics Commission. So I get what that is, that I'm not in that wind and dine category of people in the workforce. Yet, even as I go through that speech, after they told me, oh, you don't have to spend a lot of time on this, and then we open it up for Q and A, this is an area that comes up a lot because it kind of begins to trigger in people's minds, oh, wait, so that was an issue? This, that, that conference that I attended, I won a door prize, that counts? So it really does sort of generate a lot of discussion. Now, the first thing I will tell you, just, just bare bones about the gift statute 10203E, there isn't a dollar amount. It is entirely possible, some of you may interact with governments, whether it's because you live there, you work with them, you interact with them, whether it's your township or your county or your city, public schools, et cetera. There may be local entities that have a gift policy internal, right? That's fine if somebody says, if somebody working, you know, at the University of Cincinnati says, okay, guys, don't take a gift worth more than five bucks just to keep us all the up and up. That's fine if they have those kind of stringent internal policies. In the actual statute, in 10203E, you will not find a dollar amount. What you find are these two words, right? Is this thing of value, this meal, this ticket, this door prize, this gift, whatever it is, is it substantial and is it improper? That, I know some people will say, oh, yeah, because that's much simpler than giving us a dollar amount. Thank you very much, Susan, you pedantic ethics nerds, you. The truth is, policies seem to work fine because they're handled internally. The challenge sometimes for states that have had dollar amounts in their statute is, what do you do if something goes a dollar above that? Do you really open a full-blown criminal investigation for a $1 invest, for a $1 crime? So we have not in Ohio had a dollar amount. So I'm just going to break these words down quickly. Let's start with the first, improper, even though you can see they're equally weighed and balanced here. Improper to a public employer, public official means one of these, right? So let's say that I do work for the city of Cincinnati. Anybody who's doing or wanting to do business, a vendor or even a potential, and when I say potential, I don't mean every single company anywhere in the world that might one day do business with the city of Cincinnati. It's more along the lines of these folks who are already in a business relationship. They're selling road construction, they're selling consulting services, they're selling office supplies, or they're soliciting that business. They're putting in bids, how do I get that contract? Can I have a meeting with you?[1792.61] Can I have a meeting with you? So vendors are potential vendors. Anybody directly regulated by a government entity is an improper source. This one, people with a vested or specific interest in a matter before a public body. For example, let's say that I live in Cincinnati and I really want to open my new underwater basket weaving business. And the local zoning board can't let me do that unless they approve a rezoning request. Well, I'm not doing business with the zoning board. I'm not regulated by them, but I clearly have a vested interest in the outcome of the decision that they're making. Therefore, I now am an improper source. Please understand, though, this word doesn't mean to somehow indicate that every vendor with the city, everybody who's regulated, so on and so forth, have improper motives, or they're somehow improper human beings. This means that when it comes to this equation, they would be improper sources of gifts to those public employees and public officials that would be substantial. They're, they're, they're improper sources of substantial gifts. Now, I will be honest with you, not everything is substantial. The truth is, the statute does not outlaw, you know, these modest little five dollars. Somebody at a conference was handing out golf tees, or, like, I think I saw, um, a couple of years ago, like at Julian Favers, one of those tins of popcorn at the holidays. It was like seven bucks. The truth is, if someone in public service, it receives that, and they choose to return even those modest minor gifts, you know, in line, in light of my line of work, if I ever did have a meeting with someone, they said, you're lucky to pick up the tab for your coffee today, it would probably decline just because of my line of work, but it wouldn't mean that I would have violated a criminal law. If they let, if I let them pick up that tab. So if somebody's modest little tiny, you know, crankety gifts, not what we're talking, when we talk about the gifts, probably the things that come to your mind when you think about substantial, right? Um, you may have even heard of stories, investigations, the Ethics Commission's protected. People have been convicted. You know, it may look like some of these, right? There is a difference between someone giving me a golf tee and someone taking me golfing. There is a difference between someone picking up my tab for a coffee and a bagel at Tim Hortons and someone taking me to the best steakhouse in downtown Cincinnati. Um, you know, you see here things like travel expenses. I put the jewelry thing, that was an issue at a school district one, where administrators were getting expensive jewelry from the company that sold rings, like class rings, to the kids. Um, I will tell you, the ticket one is a big deal. That is a big deal. That, um, you know, I'll, I'll tell you, at least, and I, I don't live in Cincinnati, but I'll bet you can't guess in central Ohio, what a very highly sought-after ticket is in non-pandemic years. I mean, it's one of the, it's, yes, you got it. It's the Columbus Ballet. That's what everybody's trying to get their hands on in Columbus. No, you know, it's, it's fascinating to me, cuz my husband and I have been longtime ticket holders of the Columbus Symphony Orchestra. And you know, in all the years we've gone to symphony, we have yet to see a scalper outside the Ohio Theater waiting tickets, symphony tickets. We seem to value the Buckeyes more than the art in central Ohio. I'm not sure what to make of all that. Yeah, you know, it's kinda interesting, cuz when I'm going through these speeches, and especially in Columbus, it's like, yes, Susan, I get it. I can't really pick up my airfare or my hotel conference tab. I get, no, no one's gonna take me golfing. And then I say, well, and things like Buckeye tickets, you have to decline those. And I get sort of this, what? Are you kidding? Almost like, you know, I, I, I've asked to, you know, take their firstborn child away from them. Here's the thing, this is also not a bribery statute. People want to believe that. They want to believe, yeah, but Susan, yes, I took the ticket to the Reds game or to the Bengals game, or to, you know, Hamilton, when it came, the Traveling Broadway Show, and it came to Cincinnati. Yeah, I took the ticket from our vendor or the company that we regulate. But Susan, I promise, it didn't change anything. It didn't influence me. I carried forth my duties normally. You know what I always say, I always say, great, I'm thrilled to hear that it wasn't a bribe, but you've just confessed that you accepted a substantial gift from an improper source for purposes of the Ohio Ethics Law, that is all we need to demonstrate. Um, again, most modest little piddly things, we're not, we are not gonna open a major criminal investigation. But again, you have the right to know that that's not how government is conducted, right? That, 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 that's just not our life. Uh, you know, my, my husband has, uh, spent his entire life in the finance industry. For him, taking clients golfing, or taking them to dinner, or taking them to a Buckeyes game, that's been a normal part of his career. And I get that, and I accept it, and that's perfectly legal in his world. When people choose to enter into public service, again, hired, elected, or appointed, they choose a different way of life. My husband has said to me, I could never work for government. And you know what I always say, I always say, that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. But, this is part of the package, is that's just not our reality. So, I came up with a few more, and again, you can just do thumbs up or thumbs down, or you could shake or not. What do you think the Ethics Commission would say if we were all voting on some of these? What do you guys think? What about, what if, what if the city of Cincinnati, or UC, or any of the other public entities, Hamilton County, said, well, we're gonna make a policy saying, if our employees are not influenced, it is okay to take the ticket. What do you guys think the Ethics Commission would say? No, here's the thing, nobody, nobody has the authority to say, yes, please disregard a criminal statute. If I were driving to Cincinnati for a speech, in normal, non-pandemic times again, and I was running late, and I decided I'm gonna drive a hundred miles an hour on I-71 coming from Columbus, and a policeman pulled me over, state highway patrolman, I could not say, well, you know, our agency has a policy that if we're running late, it's okay to disobey the speeding warrant. Nobody has that authority. So no, they cannot do it, even if they don't think they'd influence, even if they think they could. That, if he's a good egg, he could handle. No, it can't, you cannot accept something substantial from an improper source when you're in public service. What about this one? This one comes up a lot. So this is a company, they sell things to this school district, which, well, this was also subject to the Ethics Law, public school districts. And they're wondering, are we allowed to donate this photocopier to the school? What do you guys think? Okay, this is interesting, because I'm getting people shaking their heads. So actually, this one is okay. Believe it or not, donations to public entities do occur, and they're not illegal as long as the donation goes right to that public entity. For example, many of you ever partaken in a fundraiser for a school district? Or a Parks and Rec program? We're gonna have a, a, you know, a summer program for low-income kids. Or, uh, you know, something like that. This actually is fairly common, that a company, no matter who they're dealing with, will say, hey, the purchase of the photocopy machine, we're gonna throw in ten boxes of copy paper as a thank you. That is okay, as long as that item is something that public agency actually can use, like photocopy paper, and it stays at my agency to be used for agency work. It does not go home with me to print my word searches or something, right? That's the difference. It doesn't benefit an employee. It benefits the public by a cost savings to that agency. I think I've wanted to, okay, how about this one?
Can I, can I, can I, I think the wording of the last one's confusing.
Okay.
Cuz it says, is it illegal, whereas the other ones were saying, is it legal?
Right. That's fair. Yeah. I threw you. I threw you. Yes, yes. So this was, is it illegal to donate? And the answer is no, it would not be illegal for them to donate those things. Yes. Good grammar crew tonight. I love a good grammar catch, right? Awesome. Yeah. And so this, how about this one? So, so, uh, I work for the city of Cincinnati. My husband owns a construction firm that does construction work for the city. Can he still give me a birthday present this year? Yeah, there is an exemption for immediate family. So again, we're not trying to stop good government. We're not trying to make the law crippling to people who actually wanna serve in public service. We just want it to be that people trust their government. Okay, how are we doing so far? Questions or concerns so far? We're good? All right, I, I do wanna spend, I'm gonna skip that one real quickly. I'm gonna, I wanna spend just a couple of minutes, public contract. Yes, there's a big, long, legal, boring definition that we could all look up, but the truth is, a public contract, all that is, it's anytime a public entity spends money. That, that's really all a public contract is. Could it be a ten million dollar construction contract? Sure it could. But it could also be, for example, every time I come to the city of Cincinnati, I have to speak to city government, or UC invites me a couple of times a year to speak to their staff, I park in one of the garages. I pay out of pocket, seven or eight bucks, and then when I get back to the Ohio Ethics Commission, our fiscal guy reimburses me out of petty cash, and I have to sign a little thing saying, and give proof that that's on. Even that is a public contract, because it is in fact, public money being spent. So, naturally, when we're talking about public money, we have to assume there's going to be some restrictions. This is one of our felony restrictions. This, what you're looking at here is a felony for. When someone in public service uses their public position to try to get or to get a public contract, either for themselves, member of their family, or someone that they have a business relationship with in their private outside life. So for example, let's pretend that I work for, um, I work for the Hamo, Hamilton County Department of Job and Family Services. And we're gonna overhaul our online application system for food stamps, or, or medical assistance, et cetera. And we say, you know what, let's bring in a computer consultant. We're not hiring them on as staff members. We're just gonna have them, um, you know, as a consultant for a few months to help us through this big IT project. And I think to myself, well, you know, my brother is an IT consultant. Could he throw his hat in the ring and be considered for this contract? The answer is, yes, he can pursue it. But this is gonna sound a lot like the conflict stuff, right? But this is about public money. I, as the public employer, public official, have to go, hey, bro, uh, good luck. Deep down in my heart, I hope you get the contract with the, the, the county, but you're on your own. I am not putting in a good word for you. I'm not hand-delivering your bin spec response. I'm not advocating lobbying, having hallway conversations, calling in favors. I'm not sitting in on the review. I'm not your character reference. Nothing, nothing. I do not open my big mouth or speak or type one word. If you, brother, get this contract on your own merit without my involvement, awesome, go for it, but I am not your point of contact. I have to be completely, that would certainly be the case. If I'm a business owner, I certainly would never authorize my own contract legally out of a relative, or again, those people that I might have business relationships with in my private life. Sorry, um, truly, it was an IT one. A county IT person, uh, granted an IT contract to someone who was an IT professional in her private life. The problem was those two women, the county IT person, the private consultant IT person, in their private lives, had a cookie baking business, right? Graduation wedding cookies. So the problem isn't that they were friends. The problem is it was her business associate. They had a business together. She was not allowed to authorize that contract. This is one that does carry that felony provision, because frankly, in this situation, it would be me trying to secure public money for myself, a member of my family, or someone that I have a business relationship with. Here's a few examples you've seen over the years, right? Um, I'm a city councilor, but I also serve in the board of this nonprofit, right? So I have a fiduciary responsibility and authority to that nonprofit. Are they allowed to go after the grant? They're allowed to pursue it, but I was supposed to stay away, because I now have a relationship with both, right? So, this was a real story too. This was a county employee, that, uh, the person said, is it okay if, uh, my county gives this contract to the company where my daughter just happens to work? She didn't just happen to work there. She was the salesperson that got a commission for making the sale, right? Clearly a problem in the public contract law. And this is, I, I mentioned this one already, that even behind the scenes, even if I'm not the final decision-maker, I can't even try to help get a contract behind the scenes, again, for me, member of my family, or someone that I do business with in my private outside life. And again, this is where that concept of recusal must come into play. It is also why we tell people in public service all the time, don't let your attorney be a stranger. When I say your attorney, I don't mean they have to go out and hire an attorney. But for example, you know, city of, of Cincinnati, they have a legal department, right? Um, Hamilton County, they have the, the county prosecutor's office, right? Some small villages, townships, they may retain private counsel. Don't let them be strangers. I guarantee you, any decent attorney would rather spend time helping you avoid the mess than trying to clean up the mess afterwards, right? Just like any, any other situation. You know, I mentioned, real quickly, there's one part of the public contract law that recusal doesn't solve the problem. Remember when I had those bullet points up, and it said self, family, business associate? That word self, I hope it's clear that if I, if I'm a city of Cincinnati employee, and in my private life, I have a painting business, that I paint walls and buildings and so forth, I hope it's clear that I could never in my city job authorize my own painting company to do painting work for the city. I hope that's pretty clear. It's a bad idea, like fourth-degree felony, bad idea. What does not translate, though, is the idea of recusal. Because in fairness, if it were my brother that owned the painting company, we've already said, he could go after the contract as long as I recuse. That does not translate into, well, if I work for the city and I have this painting business, couldn't I submit a bid to the city? And then as long as I recuse myself, just like I did with my brother, shouldn't I be able to get that painting contract? The answer is a resounding no. The recusal aspect doesn't solve this problem. In a nutshell, this part of the ethics law tells all of us in public service that we should never be vendors to our own public entity. For me, that would be, you know, the Ethics Commission. For people working for the city of Cincinnati, that's any city department. Not like, if I work for the city engineer's office, I'm not selling my painting business to the city health department either. My connected agency is that city government. Same thing for like, if I work for Hamilton County. That in general, again, those two parts of life, what, should be separate. For those of you who may know the ethics law, there is an exception to this part of the law, but we don't encounter it that much, so I don't make a big deal of it. It's an exception on a rare occasion. And honestly, it wouldn't even apply in Cincinnati. It might apply like, if we were talking about a township in Vinton County, Ohio. If you've never been there, it's really pretty. It looks a lot like Hocking County, right? Um, they may very well be able to make the argument, there's nobody within a hundred-mile radius that can provide this, but we've got a township trustee who can, and it will cost us this. I can, those arguments are accounted for in the statute. You, you will never convince me that if a city employee called and said, yeah, a Ethics Commission? Yeah, the only painting company we can find is one owned by one of our city council members. Is that okay if we go with that one? You know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna go, you know what, let me just Google painting companies southwest. How about we can rustle one up? See what I mean? Those parts of our lives need to be separate. I will tell you, that part, this part of the law right here is in fact, one of our most commonly violated parts of the ethics law. This idea that now that I am an elected official, or now that I work for the city, I should be able to sell my goods, my services. I actually, I, I, you can't make this stuff up, everybody. I did a speech once, and a county commissioner, again, not in Hamilton County, nobody worry about that. A county commissioner came up to me, kind of a little upset. His body language was telling me we were not friends anymore, right? And he, he said to me, point blank, he said to me, if I had known, I, his, his issue was a construction company. If I had known I could not sell construction work to the county, I wouldn't have bothered to run for office. And I was like, good to see those pure motives at work when you ran for public office, right? This law is designed to say, nope, that's not what public service is for. So this is one of our most commonly violated areas of the ethics law. I'm gonna skip these in the interest of time, everybody. Um, the other, can anybody guess what the second most commonly violated areas of the ethics law is? I'm a selling stuff to your own public entity, the next one. No guesses? I'll give it to you. Uh, the other most commonly violated part of the ethics law. Now, in fairness, this is not the prohibition against two people who happen to be related to one another by blood or by marriage, both working for the city of Cincinnati, both working for Franklin, excuse me, Hamilton County, both working for the University of Cincinnati. That certainly happens, right? Um, that, that's not the issue. The issue, the actual crime of nepotism, again, fourth-degree felony. Everybody know that? Hiring your own relatives into public service is a fourth-degree felony in the state of Ohio. Crime is when someone who was already in public service either directly hires his or her family member, or even at a minimum, does that behind-the-scenes attempting to influence, usually in favor of my relative. Yes, it could go the other way, but we don't usually see that. Um, I will tell you, in my, in my never-to-be-humble opinion, I think nepotism is one of the surest ways to destroy public's trust in that government. Absolutely. You know, um, it, it, I think one of those basic rights that you and I have as taxpayers is if a government job is open, that ought to be awarded to the most qualified candidate, not to the most connected candidate, right? Now, that's not an excuse for someone in public service going, well, my relative is well-qualified, so I should, but no, no, they should not be involved. If my husband wanted to apply for a public job, fine, uh, you know, go to the online portal, go for it. Again, I am not making phone calls. If someone calls me to ask about them, I say, I, I can't talk about it. This part of the law, I would argue, is our other epidemic, right, in Ohio, that this is still a problem. That we see that people just don't think it's a big deal, or that's, again, one of the perks of public service, et cetera. Uh, this is one I work really hard through our newsletters, through, I have Nepotism FAQs, we do check sheets, I have an e-course on this. We really need to stop this line of thinking that it's no big deal. It's a huge deal, right? If, if I found out, I mean, think about, think about it, anybody here on this webinar? If, if I found out, I mean, think about, think about it, anybody here on this webinar, if you found out your child had a teacher in a public school district, that they were 25th on the list of qualified people, but the job, you know, should have gone to, you know, but they, yeah, get it. Or even things like, what about, we got a phone call once from somebody who, um, had applied for a job in a fairly good sized city to be like an assistant to the fiscal clerk, you know? A big job, you're handling money. And this person went through all of it. Uh, a phone interview, a face-to-face interview, narrowed it down to five candidates, got down to one or two people, actually went out to dinner to, you know, test all the social skills. And at the end of the day, he found out the fiscal, the actual fiscal clerk, the person who was high officer that was hiring for the assistant, hired her own husband. How would you feel knowing they had wasted your time, worked you up into that, I, I got such a good shot, knowing the decision had been made months ago, right? Nepotism is icky, it's wrong, and it's, it's the other F-word, everybody. It's the felony, right? That, that I just think if you, if you hear of cases, again, not illegal, just you happen to know of two people might work there. They might have just gotten hired separately. Or when I worked for the EPA, I went to two or three weddings of people who met at the job and got married. We get that. Nobody hired the other. We are not everywhere though. I mentioned there's seven, 18 of us who work for the Ethics Commission. We do not have boots on the ground everywhere. If you know of a scenario where someone is hiring their relative in public service, let us know. We need to, we need to stop what is happening in Ohio with nepotism. Okay, I have talked way long, so let me give you my contact information. And I would happily open the floor if anybody has comments, questions, concerns, there's anything I can help with or send you more information on after tonight.
So I've been seeing some good questions in the chat, um, from Cory Wolf. Cory, would you like to ask the questions yourself, or would you like me to read them?
Sure, I can ask.
Okay.
Um, so my first question was, I was just wondering about perceived versus actual abuses of conflicts of interest. So, you know, I think it's, it's just as bad sometimes that the public perceives that there's an abuse where there is none. So do you have any advice to proactively address that?
So, you know, a while ago, when I was talking about gifts, and I mentioned that if somebody offered to pick up my tab for coffee at a business meeting, that it wouldn't be illegal, but I would go, no, it's okay, I got it. Because I, I agree with you. I, my background is in communications and public relations and public speaking, so I understand the power of even the appearance of impropriety. I completely agree with you. So what we always tell people is, don't forget that the ethics law, while it's important, and I want people to obey in public service because, you know, they can get in trouble if they don't. I always remind them, if you were thinking of ethics as a ladder, right? And the top rung is the most ethical anybody could ever be. The ethics law really is the bottom rung, and that's not to denigrate the law. I believe in it very strongly, but it's a reminder that the ethics law is basically saying, hey, everybody in public service, here's how not to be a criminal. We will never dissuade anybody from aspiring to higher than let's not be criminals. So I do think the appearance of impropriety and that perception is important. We just wouldn't be able to actually move forward an investigation for those issues, but it's definitely talked about when I do speeches and addresses and webinars and so forth.
So would you suggest for someone who, I'm sorry, just had a follow-up? Go ahead.
I just wanted, I just wanted to step in and say that this next question will have to be our last one before we move on to our next speaker. But if you want, I can put your contact information in the chat. Susan, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, it's, can you guys see my screen here of like?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, great.
Cory, do you have anything else?
Oh, somebody else can go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nothing?
Cory, Cory, I would say you can go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, I was just wondering also about, um, hi- I, hiring close non-relative friends. Because, I mean, I think you just answered that question sort of with the ladder analogy, but maybe you could talk, touch on that.
Yeah, you know, um, it is true. I'll be really honest. I get that there are people, maybe even here in this webinar, that you have friends that might be closer to you than your own siblings. That it would seem more egregious to you if you hired all of your friends rather than your siblings. I get that. I, I'll be really honest. If, if in fact, we had to move forward with potential prosecution for nepotism or public contracts or contracts or anything else, it would be very easy for us to define family, right? We would go into a courtroom and say, your honor, you know, they, they hired their sister, they hired their parents, their children, their grandchildren, their grandparents. We have a very specific definition of family. If we tried that with friend, that gets into very nebulous legal waters of how do you define it, right? So that is one of those areas, again, where we talk about, think of the appearance of impropriety as well. Technically, no, I could never legally hire my sister to come work for me. Technically, could I hire the ladies in my book club, the two women I run with on Saturday mornings for fitness? And my best friend? Technically, I could. But I, I guess I would just, and I know we gotta draw this to a close, I would just close by saying that um, I know that headlines of people making bad decisions uh, calls into question public service as a whole. I just want you to know that whether it's the appearance of impropriety, wanting to do the right thing, going above and beyond the law, I will tell you, if then in public service, really, truly, it will be, you know, 30 years this year, I, I, I was 21 when I started with the state of Ohio. So I, I, all joking aside, I'm not at all ashamed of my age. Every year that I'm alive, I'm grateful for. Um, in those years, have I run into people who have either deliberately done something really, really wrong, hoping they wouldn't get caught? Or have I run into people who made some really stupid decisions that they regretted and they are not bad people? Yes, those are both true. But I will tell you, I also meet every day in my line of work, people in public service who are wonderful, dedicated, hardworking, who went into the field. I did not go in to the ethics law thinking I was gonna get famous, it was gonna be glamorous. There really are people in public service who cared deeply and wanted to use their gifts and their talents, uh, in a way that hopefully benefits our larger community and even our state. So don't let all of these things discourage you, that there really are some wonderful people in public service. But having said that, you absolutely have the right to expect accountability if someone does go outside the boundaries of the statute. We're honored to be part of that process as well. So thank you so much. It was my great honor to be here tonight. Um, there's my email. If I can be of any assistance, it would be my great pleasure on behalf of, I've not lived in Cincinnati, but I will tell you, uh, my beloved nephew did get both his undergrad and masters at UC and today is living a wonderful life and a wonderful job. And he, the one, he says he lives in California now. He never says he misses us, right? He always says, I miss Cincinnati. So have all of us who thank you for giving him a wonderful five years of getting his bachelor's and his master's, the wonderful city with great history and way more running hills than I'll ever get in Columbus. I'm gonna come just run the blank page with you all, all right? Thanks again, everybody. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much, Susan. Thank you. You, you made ethics sound so fun.
Oh, thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you. All right, everyone, we're going to move on to the artist-led section of the evening. I'm going to introduce our artist partner, Mary Claire Reitz. And she's going to take us through a really fun, interactive ethics workshop, uh, creative, like an acting exercise. So let me tell you a little bit about Mary Claire. With a background in community organizing, Mary Claire MC Reitz is a Cincinnati-based artist who offers herself as inviter of people and gatherer of resources for art-centered community projects. Those with most stake, develop, produce, voice these place-based public works that point to possibilities for empathy, connection, and action toward equity. With no formal art training until age 48, MC completed her MFA at the University of Cincinnati College of Design, Architecture, Art, and Planning with a focus in socially engaged art. A lifelong Ohioan, MC has lived in Cincinnati for 17 years with husband Mike and daughter Francesca. So I'm going to turn it over to you, MC, and let me know when you want me to start your PowerPoint.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I just wanna say that, um, my big excitement tonight is this is my first time using a virtual background. I'm really excited. And I don't, it's not exactly right, as you can see, but it's weird and fun. And my favorite part is when I use a Kleenex. Um, so let's just, um, jump right in. Let's just jump right into the presentation. Thanks for the introduction, Hilly. So I'm going to be, um, oh, the colors are so different. That's interesting. Okay. Um, I'm not an ethicist, obviously. I'm an artist who works with communities, um, and collaborates with community folks. Um, and one of the things that we have found is, um, we use art as a way to, uh, address issues that people want to address in their community. And one of the things that we've found is that because uh, we are people working together to do something creative, often performance makes the most sense as a creative medium. And, um, don't get nervous. This doesn't mean that you have to perform in a way that's like theatrical or professional, but, um, just, just the idea of, you know, embodying or an acting, um, an idea or a situation as a way to better understand it. So let's have the next slide. Okay, so I'm gonna, um, invite us tonight to do something that I invented this, I just invented this idea, this term, this week. Um, and maybe it's already out there in the world somewhere, but the idea of brainstorming through acting something out. So I'm really gonna encourage us, excuse me, to, to think, um, to brainstorm solutions to ethical problems um, through actually enacting or embodying a role that you choose in a particular scenario. We can go to the next slide. So some of you maybe have seen, I know Action Tank, um, twice now, has hosted um, the screening of a film called Wonderland that we produced out of, um, an art space called Storefronts at the Miami U Center for Community Engagement. And Wonderland was a collaboration among, um, neighborhood people and over the run, Miami students. Um, where people actually, in some cases, they played themselves, um, and, and then a couple of cases, they played someone very close to themselves, but not quite themselves. Um, and in one case, somebody last minute stepped in and played a city council person who was not. But this was, this was an example of using the creative medium of, of performance, of acting, of theater as a way to kind of live into a problem, even, even though it's a problem that meant the people who were acting this out live. There's something about putting on a role or, um, stepping into uh, a sort of creative, uh, medium that helps us to think and feel and see differently. It also helps people outside who are watching, um, to, to see uh, differently. Um, in this case, each one of the characters wrote their own part. So I, I'm not gonna be asking you to do that. We don't have that kind of time tonight. It's gonna be more um, quick and easy and just kind of improvisational. But just to say that, that this kind of enactment or embodiment or performance um, can be used for us to kind of think through and work through some of our intractable community problems like ethics. So let's go to the next slide. So what we'll be doing tonight is, um, Hilly is going to divide you all into, um, smaller groups, into rooms, and each group is going to get a scenario. Um, this is an example of one of them. The red, uh, square gives you the scenario. In this case, the stock staffer. The challenge kind of, um, invites you to each take on a role in this situation. Um, and then the, the two yellow squares below give you, um, different roles that you can choose from uh, to, to enact this particular, uh, scenario and to kind of work through, like, what is the ethical response? Um, and let me see if there's anything else. I wanna say, um, as you do this, um, if there's an aspect of the scenario, the way it's written, that's really a sticking point and keeping you from moving forward and actually just kind of, you know, um, jumping in and acting into, um, you know, act storming solutions, just change the scenario, adjust it for yourselves. Um, but also i- if adjusting or changing the scenario is taking too much time and that becomes an obstacle to, to do an exercise, um, try to avoid that too. But the, you know, this is, you know, you can be creative and, and make adjustments, um, so that it works for you. Um, okay, uh, I see that the, um, yeah, next slide, please. Okay. Oh, wow. Okay. So, um, I wonder if it would make more sense for me to share my screen and show that's just really, that formatting got weird when it got emailed. Should we do that, or? Or just go with what it says? Let's just go with what it says. Um, okay, so what this, I'll decipher for you. These are the tips. First of all, in doing this exercise, don't be scared. We've had enough of that over the last year. Um, this is fun, you, you know? Um, we're all in good company. Um, be brave. Um, step up and, and go ahead and try it out, but there's no reason to be scared. It's very low stakes. Um, do resist the inclination. You will have the inclination as you're trying to work through the problem to talk as yourself. Do what you can to, 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 um, act storm, brainstorm as that, as the role that you're acting. Um, because that gives you, uh, that perspective, um, from which to wrestle with the problem. Um, trying out improv's primary principle, yes, and, I'm sure most of you are familiar with that. Um, the idea that when another person in your group says or does something, you just go with it. You don't necessarily resist and say, no, that's not gonna work. You just respond, you accept what they've said or what they've done, and you respond and you keep going. And then finally, um, you know, if you're so inclined, try using humor. Um, I know, you know, ethics may be, it's not a funny topic, especially it hasn't been recently. But the point here is that hu- humor can help really bust us out of, um, you know, can help us bust our thinking outside the box, basically. Um, sorry for the weird formatting. Uh, next slide. Okay, so before questions, I think an email went out, um, inviting you to gather some character costumey things around the house. If you have, so for example, you know, maybe you have a, I just got a bunch of hats, so maybe this is, uh, this is, um, you know, your everyday Cincinnati resident. Um, maybe this is, uh, the director of an environmental nonprofit. Um, maybe this is a businessman. I have been tapped. I don't know. And, you know, who knows? Maybe this is the mayor. All right, so if you have something on hand to help your, um, your, your group mates know who you're playing, the other way that they, um, that they might be able to know, remember who, what role you're playing, is, is to have some sort of name tag. That's cool. Um, that you might be holding up so that they remember who you are. Uh, are there any questions about the exercise? You'll have about 20 minutes to play around with this. Any questions?
If anyone has questions, feel free to unmute yourself.
And I, I'll be dropping in on your group in case you have any questions. I think Suz- did Susan leave, Hilly?
I believe so.
You would have been great. You would have been great to have around as people wrestle things, but yeah. So I'll be dropping in just um if I can be of any help, but again, I'm not an ethicist. We're an ethics lawyer. Okay, is it time to send people to breakout rooms? Yeah. Alright, here we go.
Oh.
Hi. Was it fun? Okay.
I think I left.
What?
I think I left before everybody else.
Oh, it's okay. They have thirty seconds left.
Okay.
Yeah, and they'll close automatically.
You're fine.
Okay.
They'll, they'll be back here in a moment.
Okay, I'll have to hold them an apology, though. Oh, my goodness.
It was fun.
Good, good.
Okay, that was super fun.
It's a good thing you were with us, Mary Claire, because I don't know what we would have done if you hadn't been giving us.
Yeah, I I played Shoe Leather Johnson, the reporter. Mister Texas boots here and the company uh, company official in the green hair and the mustache and county commissioner. Um, uh, um, meeting with us from their home, you can see their cartoon home behind. And some really persistent, smart, savvy residents who did a lot of research, so it was pretty fun.
It was.
Yeah, definitely enjoyed myself.
That was cool.
Alright, so um it's eight forty. My my screen is doing weird things. It's so distracting. Um, let's just uh take, let's just take a few minutes and kind of debrief. Um, what did this creative exercise help you see um in the ethical problem that you were, that you were um engaging with? Um, that you might not otherwise have seen um without, without engaging in it as a creative exercise? That's one uh question. Another different version of that is, did a creative approach help you problem solve differently? If so, how? Um, and then just generally, what else left an impression?
Oh, wow, great.
I think I would um, I would have had written data uh when I went to the county commissioner, which I did not have. You have proof of what you're talking about in writing, because she was a good talker, man.
What else?
Just generally learning about the code of ethics, being involved in city council, period. And and seeing it from a standpoint, not only as a citizen, but from a elected official or a member of council's standpoint, when addressing these same issues that, you know, we normally talk about in our daily life and having to work it out through these type of of work exercises. It made me see it a little differently, you know, see our officials differently and how they handle their jobs and interact with us. You know, and seeing how things are. And just brought me to a great sense of awareness, you know, better understanding of the city and how things are and gave me a sense of interest as well as involvement. I feel it's my duty now to be more inclusive, involved with the things that goes on with my city. You know, just not from an opinionated standpoint, but more on a grassroots helping standpoint, if you understand. So I learned a lot. Thank you, you guys, you know.
Thank you.
Learn a lot more.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just, the importance of everybody being a part of of decision-making and everybody's voice being heard and how it's affecting them.
Yeah.
And outcome.
Great. And Nicole in the chat says be opinionated. Do you want to say more about that, Nicole?
Um, I don't, I don't think there's any uh room in politics to not be opinionated. You gotta, you gotta pick a side. You need to be informed. You need to be flexible when new information comes your way. But uh, there's no neutral ground.
Got it. What else did this exercise show anyone that you want to share?
Um, it was a little too easy for me to put myself in the shoes of a developer or a big wig. And I was, I was like thinking of all the things that I've heard before during meetings. And I was like, you know, if I can come up with what they're gonna say, then maybe we can get ready for next time when we know what they're already gonna say.
So, so embodying that role helped you prepare for what?
Yeah, yeah.
For a real situation. Cool. What else?
I would say, yeah, just to uh echo what she's, what she said, it's, oh, maybe it was a little too much fun playing quote-unquote villain, um especially with the sunglasses on and the scarf. But um notice, see how easily someone, you know, whether it's developer or someone outside of couldn't, couldn't influence city council and, you know, turn, turn good people who may have made all the right decisions up to that point and forced them to bend for whatever reason. You know, even if it's just one, one bad choice out of a thousand, it's the one that sticks out and can really derail a lot of goodwill that goes to the city.
Right, right. Displayed how easy it is while the city officials become corrupted, as the gentleman just spoke and said, through persuasion or family membership, or just not even being aware of they're not acting ethical or unethical. You know, so it's given a sense of both sides, what is ethical and what is non-ethical. You know, the things that you can do as a member of an official status and what you can't do, you know, being a private citizen.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll just say, like, I love this activity. It's so much fun to get to play roles and also get to dress up a little bit and play a character. As my teammates know, I had a pot, a pot on my head.
Oh, man.
Looked like this.
Yeah.
But I also want to say, what? You want me to keep it on? Okay. No, but um I also want to say, like, it would be fun to, I feel like it would be fun to do more of this and um get to, get to flesh them, flesh out the scenarios even a little bit more and where each person's coming from and kind of see what ethical conundrums we find ourselves in. Because it's helpful to, it would, I think it'd be helpful to understand what it's like to be a city council member, where maybe you, like some of the other folks were saying, you, you want to do the right thing, but then you're like, your buddy is pressuring you to, and you don't want to let him down or.
And he has voted for, he's voted for things for you, like issues you care about, and yeah.
So I feel like it might be fun to, I would love to see more of this type of stuff. It's great.
Yeah, it can be the kind of thing that can be used um by a group of citizens who are organizing around an issue to to rehearse, to meet with officials, company officials, um elected officials. But it could also, um, for anybody who's running for city council, which I think, you know, there are lots of people now because Action Tank has created this awesome city council school idea. Um, to to practice, like, what's it gonna be like when I'm up there and I'm under pressure? And and like rehearse how to respond and um, and and, and what are the right decisions to make? What are the ethical decisions to make? Who else?
Well, I think I I learned Nicole stayed so calm um as the county commissioner throughout everything that we as residents were throwing at her, that you have to have a certain kind of a personality to be able to, to take some of this, the uh the flack that you'll get from residents if you're a politician, and I think that um Nicole has it.
Yeah, she does. She really does. Great.
But you also, and this isn't about you, but some of the kind, some of the politicians that we have, you have to have an ego. And like.
So I think um being informed above all is probably the most important thing. Because if you're informed, then it allows you to kind of think quickly on your feet in refuting something. It allows you to, you to feel more comfortable speaking up when you see something happening. Um, I found myself not knowing the ins and outs of the, the particular situation, the laws that we were talking about. And I, and it just made me feel uncomfortable, you know, really speaking out, so.
Yeah, I would, I would echo.
So this is a, maybe a prompt to uh learn more about.
Mm-hmm.
And Susan's presentation was so informative. But yeah, there's lots to learn about the ethics, the ins and outs of ethics. Alright, um, seems like Juana and Hilly, it's probably, I'm guessing you want to wrap up. Unless there's any last thoughts?
Or if uh there aren't any final thoughts from anyone else. It seems like you guys all had a really great time in your breakout rooms. I'm really excited about that. Well, thank you. Oh, you go right ahead, Juana.
I was just gonna say, thank you for planning such a fun activity, M.C.
You're welcome.
We can't wait to, we can't wait to do it again in person, um hopefully in less than a year.
Next time I'll have a proper green screen. This has been. Sounds good. Thanks for having me. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Everybody.
Thank you all so much.
Have a good night.
Have a wonderful weekend.
Until next time.
Okay, take care, everybody. Bye-bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.